It takes a lot of funding to keep Northwest Public Radio on the air.
Good afternoon, everyone. This is the City of Moscow Public Works Finance Committee, meeting on Tuesday, May 27th. I'm Chairman of the Committee Walter Steed, Council President to my right Dan Carskowen, Council member to my left Tom Lamar, filling in for Art Bedke, Tom's a council member. To his left Bill Belknap, Community Development Director, is filling in for Gary Redner. So with half of us not usually being here, we'll see if we can get through this.
We might be able to figure it out.
First item is the approval of the May 12, 2014, meeting minutes.
They look good to me, so I would go ahead and move an approval.
I wasn't here, but I'll say fine.
And I was here, so I will agree, so they are considered approved. Okay, Chairman's prerogative, because of some timing situations, we're going to move the GHV report 2013 update up to the first item, if that's okay, and then we'll hold the public meeting on F Street Lot Division after that.
Thank you.
Keegan Caldwell.
Yeah, my name's Keegan Caldwell, I'm the Sustainability Intern. For the last year, I've been working here in the greenhouse gas inventory. Originally, the inventory started as an update of the 2010, and because of some changes over time, we changed it to the 2013 update as it is now. There are some differences, and I'll go over those, and there are some comparisons to the old inventory report as well. So to start off, we stuck around with ICLI. Last year, we ended up renewing our contract with ICLI, our membership, rather, and along with that, we got some benefits. We get to work with them, and we get their access to their inventory data for other cities and what other cities are doing, as well as their ClearPath software, which is one of the leading softwares out there in the market available for climate mitigation. ICLI kind of streamlined the process of climate mitigation into five steps. They call them milestones, of which the City of Moscow is currently in the first. And as you can see, the first is conducting baseline and inventory, and then a forecast. So the eight steps to that first milestone start with designating a project coordinator, which would be the Sustainability Intern, and then following that is defining a scope year, or defining a scope of the study, which can be done in either a community scale or government scale. The 2005 inventory was done on a government scale, so we kept that, and the difference being that one is identifying the inventory of emissions from just government production, like government facilities, as well as facility, or as well as fleet. The next is deciding on a year. Because of availability of data, the 2005 data for inventory, like bills and things like that, energy bills, were no longer available, so we updated that to 2008. So then the next few steps are collecting data, entering that data into ClearPath to gain an inventory, and a forecast, accumulating it into a report, and sending it into ICLI for a milestone award. So inventories are broken down into kind of a stratification. The first tier is what's called scopes, of which there are three, and then under that is sectors, and these are just ways that you can go through and analyze the report. So the first scope is basically all combustion, and it's broken down into vehicle emissions, as well as stationary combustion. Vehicle emissions is all the emissions from our fleet for both diesel and gasoline usage, and then stationary combustion is things like natural gas usage by the city facilities. The next scope is from purchased electricity. This is all the energy that we purchased from Avista for use across the city and facilities and other sectors. And so you can see, there's this fancy map that the EPA has put together. Every district across the country makes a different amount of CO2 per megawatt usage, and that's based on what they produce their energy from. We're predominantly hydropower, so we have one of the lowest CO2s per megawatt hour across the country, whereas like Kansas, which is a coal-producing area, has a much higher one, because there's more CO2 produced from burning coal than there is from creating hydroelectricity. The last scope is kind of the motley crew. It's everything else that doesn't fall under the first two, and for us, that's solid waste, employee commute, and water treatment. Solid waste is calculated by an estimation based off of all of the bins that are outside of our facilities, and we assume that all of those were full at the time of collection. The city produces about 1% of all of the waste that goes into the landfill from the City of Moscow. Employee commute is all of the emissions from our employees coming to and from work, and water treatment actually consists of all of the water we draw from wells, as well as the electricity for treating the water for the entire city, not just the government itself. So when we analyze this by scope, 66% comes out of that electricity purchased from Avista, which is good news, in the sense that any savings that we make on emissions is directly related to not using as many kilowatts, kilowatt-hours, which then also means that we're saving money. Likewise, there's 23% of emissions were from scope one, which is that combustible fuel in our cars, as well as natural gas in our facilities, and anything that we don't use there is also saving us money. The third one, scope three, is the hardest to influence, because we can't really draw any less water than we already are, and we already have to treat all the water that goes to the plant, and you can't really tell employees of the city how they can and can't drive to work, or what vehicle they choose to get there. So that being the hardest one to influence, we're fortunate in the sense that that's the lowest contributing scope. So looking at things by the sector, at first glance, wastewater treatment facilities is the largest producer, but we have to keep in mind that this sector is actually for the entirety of the city, and not just the government itself. Solid waste facilities, as I said before, only 1% of that, of the waste produced and sent to Oregon for the landfill, is from the government. If you apply that same kind of idea of 1% to the wastewater treatment, we're only looking at about 170 metric tons of CO2, which would make it the second lowest contributing factor, and buildings and facilities would be the first. So looking at these individually, buildings and facilities basically breaks down. The largest producer is the pool, and that's predominantly because of natural gas usage for heating, but that has already decreased since 2008, because the pool started to turn on heaters later in the year and turn them off earlier in the year. Behind that is the HERC and City Hall, both of which is all electricity usage through lighting and personal computer use in offices, so influencing how our employees use their electricity and updating efficiency can do us well in the buildings and facilities sector. Wastewater treatment facilities breaks down into water being drawn from wells and water being treated at the plant. Again, this is kind of an area that we can't really influence, because we've had a pretty stable water production and treatment for the last several years, and this number's likely to stay about the same. Streetlights and traffic lights, majority of all the lights in town are traffic lights, and therefore the biggest contributor. Traffic, or our streetlights, rather, traffic lights, there's only a few of them, but we have replaced those with LEDs since the baseline, so that number is suspected to be a little bit lower. Vehicle fleet, the biggest contributor is the street department, but that's because they also have the largest fleet of diesel-operated vehicles, and diesel is a higher contributor to CO2 per gallon of fuel than gasoline is. Followed behind that is the police department, but it has the highest operated vehicle miles per year. They have more cars on the road every day than any other fleet, so that's why that number is higher, but EcoDriver program's been doing a lot to lower these numbers since 2008. The next sector is employee commute. This is basically a survey of what type of vehicles our employees drive. The majority of our employees drive light trucks. Behind that is passenger vehicles, and basically what this means is that majority of our employees are driving gasoline-vehicle cars, powered cars, so our emissions are going to be lower than if they were driving diesel. We can't really influence this, but it's not any state that we would necessarily need intervention over any other category. So getting on to the forecast results, we took these inventory results and projected them to the year of 2005, to get an idea of if we don't change anything, what we would be producing. At a 1% growth rate, we're expected to produce just over 6,000 metric tons from what we're doing right now, which is just over 4,000 tons. So currently, the City of Moscow has a goal of 20% reduction by the year 2020. Projecting that goal out to the year 2025, we'd be, we have to reduce about 2,847 metric tons of what we would potentially be producing in 2005, based off these numbers. So here, you're seeing a few different opportunities. So the first one, this red one, would be 10% reduction, and then the next is a 15% reduction, and then the 20% reduction. So this is kind of an idea of where we're going. The following steps with ICLI would be to produce a new goal, such as the 20% by 2020 goal, and we can decide if that's something we want to stick with, or if there's a new goal we want to pursue, as far as, as well as projecting out further years than beyond just 2020. And then after that, is establishing programs and policies that we would like to implement, and then following that up with implementing those programs and policies, and following through to see if they're actually working. So this is the state of where our greenhouse gas inventory is now. Fewer future projects will kind of expand this project and see where we go from there. If you have any questions for me, I'd love to answer them.
I'll bet Tom does.
Yeah. I'll go. So 2008 is your, is actual?
Yes.
In this graph? But 2013 is still a projection?
Yes.
Or is that actual?
No, that is, that's projection. There is not an inventory that's been done for 2013. There was one that was done for 2012, but it was using the old software, so it can't be compared to this on like an apples-to-apples basis, because of some issues. So there could be one that could be updated through the new software to see where we are now, but that hasn't been done yet.
And you had 2005 numbers as well?
I have 2005 numbers from the old report, but again, that's-
Still their old style.
That's actually two softwares before, so there, and it's missing some pieces, like the factor in the number, that graph, or the chart of the different areas across the country, that wasn't taken into account in that report, so the, everything according to energy bills is inflated, more than it needs to be. So those numbers are all way higher than these are.
So if, the people you're working with are changing the software? So how would you, if they keep changing the software, how do you ever get your feet on the ground?
Well, with the first two, they were both called CACP, and they were, the 2008 was an update of the 2005 version of it, but ICLI as an organization's made a lot of changes to try to make this process easier for its users, and part of that process was updating to an online software, and it's a lot more user-friendly, but the only downfall to that switch was a one-time re-update of everything. So from the different CAP softwares, you could carry all your data over, but you had to re-manually enter everything into this new software, and won't have to do that again, now that it's updated. So now we can go in with any year that we'd like, and just enter our bill information into that, and produce an inventory for that year. It's relatively easy now that we're on that network and ready to go.
With the wastewater treatment plant being the largest contributor, and then I think, within the facilities, you said the pool was, was the biggest contributor, are there any strategies with either of those two facilities for potential reductions? That have been talked about among staff, or?
For our wastewater treatment, because our pumps, because that's also including all of the wells-
That's all.
And all of our wells, and are all as up-to-date as they can be, and we're drawing just about as much water every year as we have in years past. Those numbers aren't going to change, unless if we want to spend a lot of money to get very little gain, whereas in like building and facilities with more efficient lighting, and more efficient occupancy sensors and things like that, you can make larger gains. And like I said, that sector is the one and only sector that's actually reflecting the entire city, and not just the government, as it's small unit, because there's not an algorithm for breaking it down to that smaller unit accurately. Ideally, you could apply that same 1% that was applied to solid waste, and you would have a fraction of it, would only be wastewater. As far as the pool's concerned, pool management's already been trying to pursue less bills, or smaller financial cost, by using less natural gas to heat the pool annually, so they should turn the heaters on later in the year and off earlier in the year. And by saving that money, they've inadvertently also been saving emissions, because they're using less natural gas, which is that gain that we're going to see across all of buildings and facilities as we lower those numbers. We'll save money at the same time as saving on our emissions footprint.
A few years ago, I saw a presentation by some university students and a professor, looking at an idea for pre-heating the water at the pool, which is an idea of using black PVC pipe across the roof of the changing area, and running water through there to pick up some solar gain, before it's then heated up to be put in the pool. So the idea is that perhaps we could take it from 55 degrees straight out of the ground, and, you know, maybe take it up to 65, or maybe take it to 70 or something like that, before then trying to heat it the rest of the way to 80 degrees, or 85, or whatever we're putting in the water.
One tactic that a group of my fellow students and I this last year had done a study on was, there's a pool down in Nevada that has geothermal regulators for their water, and basically it's a network of pipes that run underground, about 20 feet underground or so, and the water runs through that, and it keeps it all regulated to stagnant temperature, which is about 65 degrees, and then you push that into your heaters, and you can either cool it or heat it to whatever your ideal temperature is. You're using less electricity to do so, which is a similar technique that's used at the NASA Ames Research Center in San Francisco. It's a little less sophisticated version. Something like that could be implemented. There are some like solar, hydro, thermal regulators that have been implemented across town, which is basically just that, you're running water above ground, and the sun heats up whatever it's in, and that pool goes, that water goes in. Part of it is treatment, too, though. All of the pool water has to go through machines for chemical treatment and things like that, which changes the temperature as well, but there are options for enhancing the pool.
Dan?
Well, it's, like I say, we, it's kind of hard to make a goal when we're, when we're, you know, we've changed our data so many times, you know, and the way, you know, I thought that the, before, it seemed like we were, we were, we were keeping on track, but now it's a matter of, you know, keeping our fingers crossed that maybe the next time we're still on track.
Finding the track.
Finding that track.
So do you think we'll be able to catch up with the actual, documenting the actuals for 2013, then?
Yeah, I, the issue that I had kind of perceived with the original inventory in 2010 was that it was using, and I don't know if this was something that we were overlooking, or if this was an improvement that ICLI's made since then, but that kind of milestone process, they basically walk any city through making their goals. So this next step is going to take your inventory information, and say what is a logical and educated goal now, and we'll find out whether or not that 20% by 2020 is a good goal, and if it is, then we'll find ways of getting there. I can say, in preliminary looks, EcoDriver's already had a big impact, and minor changes around buildings and facilities could also do a lot, and maybe we need to go in and find a way to modify that wastewater treatment figure to better represent what's actually going on, and that might just take some time sitting down with our ICLI representatives to find a good representation, and how to do that. So there are still things to work on, but those will be, those kinks will be worked out as we continue down this path of the milestone system that ICLI's set up. So we'll get our first milestone award, which will then be recognized nationally that we've made this first step towards our commitment, and the next three are really what's going to get us underway towards reaching those goals.
So the 20% reduction is that 20%, reducing 20% of the projection, or-
That's reducing-
Or is it actual?
That's saying 20%, the goal reads now 20% of the 2005 levels, which when we updated to 2008, we discussed just moving that, so 20% to the 2008, that was never actually formally done, so we can do that now, or we can wait until the next stage when we're actually formally going through the process of making those goals, which is why we never formulated a move to do so. But it's, it reads 20, say this 2008 level, we're saying we want to reduce in this figure 20% of that 4,000 metric tons. So that's how you're getting those figures on the right, that 3,322. So those is, that's what it is. It's reducing of that baseline year, not of the projected year.
Okay. Well, when I-
Jen, did you have something?
Thank you, I just wanted to add one thing.
Jen Pifner, the Assistant to the City Supervisor.
When the original goal was set in 2005, we did that by resolution, and so that's the same process we would do again if we were to change that, and as Keegan, I think, pointed out, that would be the next step, is to review that goal, and like he said, we could be spot-on and heading in the right direction. One of the things I don't think we considered when we looked at the 2005 data originally and set that goal was in consideration for the growth rate of either the city or the community, and so that's one of the things we wanted to look at as we evaluate that goal as well.
So what, Bill, is our next step? Are you asking anything from us today, other than having received the report?
Yeah, just to receive the report, and we'll keep you posted as we work through those milestones, and have suggestions for goal adjustments, or future inventories as well. None at this time.
I would just like to have our next update be when we hear more about, you know, getting the more accurate-
How are we as far as year to year?
Right, like if you find out in some number of months that we're making some headway on getting actuals into the system, I'd love to have an update on that.
Well, and I'd also like to take a quick moment to thank Keegan for his work. He's just recently graduated, and we'll be moving on.
Oh, who won't be the one making-
You'll see somebody else giving that report.
Okay. Well, thanks, Keegan. Thanks for all your work.
Congratulations.
Well, thank you.
Thank you for doing this.
Okay. All right, we've got a-
Hopefully we don't-
Rest of an agenda to deal with here, so.
None of the documents in here would get the information that, we're destroying documents today, hopefully we don't destroy the ones that have the information that we need for-
I've already photocopied everything that I needed.
Okay, good, thank you.
Thank you again.
Thanks a lot.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is a public meeting on a request for a lot division at 1206 F Street, and Mike Ray will present that. Well, Mike is getting set up, I would like to make the announcement that this is not a public hearing, it's a, it's a public meeting, and I plan to allow some comment from people in the audience that may wish to speak. If you do, not, don't feel any pressure to have to speak, but if you wish to make a short comment, and as the mayors like to say, not repeat what the person before you said, and keep it short, then I won't put a clock on you, so we'd, we'll try to get that done. Ready?
Yep. Good afternoon. Well, before you today, we have a lot division proposal from Daryl Paul at 1206 East F Street in Moscow. So just to familiarize yourself with the subject property, it's in the center of your screen, outlined in red, about 29,000 square feet. You have Orchard Avenue to the west, F Street to the south, as well as North Grant Street to the east. You have Rotary Park due west across Orchard, and you're also surrounded by various single-family and two-family dwellings in the area. This is the zoning configuration of the area, currently within the R3, which is a medium-density residential, R3 zoning district. You have an R2 zone on the south side of F Street, as well as an R2 zone in that northeast quadrant of the map there. So a closer view of the property, once again, a little over 29,000 square feet in size, has an existing dwelling on the property on the west side. There will be a shed being removed, you can't see it because of the tree coverage in this picture, but it's just to the northeast of the current dwelling. So currently no curb, currently no sidewalks on any of the lot frontage, so as part of the development, that'll be a requirement to be installed on the property. So this is the proposal, basically to divide the property into four parcels, over 7,000 square feet in size, which is our minimum lot size for the R3 zone for two-family dwellings. 6,000 square feet's the minimum lot size for single-family dwellings. Also, minimum lot width for that zone is 60 feet, so all the proposed parcels will meet that 60-foot minimum lot width requirement. This was the record or survey that's submitted as part of the lot division, so once again, you've got the house on the west-hand side, that shed, where one of the proposed property lines cuts through. You have the three proposed parcels there to the east, and you also have a 20-foot wide private access easement, which would end up resulting in an access drive, likely to end up reloading any dwellings that are supposed to be built on Parcels 2, 3, and 4. That would allow the dwellings to be pushed up as close to the street as possible. We have a 15-foot setback within the R3 zone, so. Looking at our parkland dedication requirements, this property is not within a platted subdivision, and so those parkland dedication requirements kick in at this point for proposed lot divisions. Looking at R3 zone, you have about a 7% net developable area required for the dedication within that zone, so looking at that 29,000-square-foot parcel, essentially, you'd be required, 7% of that is 2,030 square feet, or $629.26 fee in lieu of dedication. So there's an attached memo from Dwight Curtis, our Parks and Rec Director, attached to your packet, and Dwight is recommending acceptance of that fee in lieu of dedication, and the developer, just a side note, the developer will have to pay the fee in lieu of dedication prior to any building permits being issued upon the property. So with that, we have noticed everybody within 600 feet of this property, we've also posted it onsite, seven days in advance of this meeting today, and staff's recommendation is to take public comment, if applicable, and recommend approval of the lot division request with no conditions suggested. And I'd also like to point out that we have a received public comment from Gene Lefingwell, which is also attached to your packet today. We've also received an email that I received this morning, that I think I've distributed, but I also have copies, and I'll let you worry about if you want to-
That was from Joanne Turrocky?
It is, and I also received a, an email-
We have that.
Okay, okay. And I also received an email from Nancy Chaney, and so just wanted to worry that as well.
That one we haven't seen?
I haven't seen it.
I didn't make-
Did you make copies of it? I didn't see that one.
Okay, I did make-
These guys may not have.
I think a couple of yours were copied on.
Yeah.
But I did make copies for everybody.
Okay, Mike, so just to restate, I believe what you've already said, there is no zone change requested or required.
No, sir.
There is no, and, and what is being proposed meets the current R3 zone requirements in terms of setbacks, frontage, square footage, and everything else.
Correct. The existing dwelling will meet all setback requirements as proposed, all the parcels will meet the minimum lot size for the R3 zone, as well as the minimum lot width, so correct.
Any questions for, for Mike at this moment?
You answered my sidewalk question already.
Yes, that was, one of my first questions, too, was that sidewalks would be part of the-
And no other-
The finished development.
Which, no other public infrastructure improvements required, other than the sidewalks?
None that I'm aware of.
Okay.
Well, they'll have to water and sewer to those lots.
Correct, I mean, yeah, but-
Nothing, nothing as far as different street alignments or anything like that.
No.
And Scott's got it surveyed, so that property line on the aerial doesn't go through the edge of the house-
Correct.
In reality.
Yep, yep.
We, I really appreciate these aerials in doing this. It really helps me understand it and see it, and I'm sure we all understand that this is not perfect science yet, and when you get a property line shaving a house like that, it may not be exactly that way on the ground, because of the angle of the satellite or something to that effect. Okay, if y'all don't have anything else from Mike, I would, I would ask anyone in the audience that wishes to make a comment on this, yes ma'am?
Do you have a question?
No, you have, you need to come up to the microphone, please, and if, and if you would, give us your name and address.
I'm sorry, it's a little tough for me to walk after I would sit. Nanette Pelton, I live at 1227 East F-
Yes, ma'am.
Moscow. And my question is, what does R3 zoning entail as far as structure? Is that- Is that duplex?
I will let Bill or Mike take that.
R3 zone would allow for multiple different types of dwellings. So, it'd be basically single-family, two-family, twin homes, and townhouses would be allowed in the R3 zone.
Okay. Does anybody know what Mr. Paul wants to do, wants to build there?
Well, we may have Mr. Paul come up and elaborate on that, but basically, 7,000 square feet is the minimum lot size for a two-family dwelling. So, basically, he could build duplexes or twin homes on those parcels if he wanted to.
Okay. My concern is that F Street has increased in traffic tremendously over the last few years, and putting more house duplexes or whatever is going to increase that again. There's been some fevery going on in the neighborhood, and adding apartments or duplexes may impact that as well. And as a resident of the neighborhood, I'm not real crazy about the idea of having duplexes across the street from me, and I just wanted that known.
Okay, that's fine. Is your house in the picture?
Um-
Just out of curiosity.
I believe it is the second one from the left on the bottom. No, where'd it go? Second from the left on the bottom, very bottom, I believe.
Brown roof or-
There was another picture before that we had a better, you could see my house better, the picture prior.
Okay, so you live across the-
From the left, right?
No, from the right. Did I say left? Second from the right. I'm confused now.
That one.
That one down there.
From that corner over there.
Okay. You live across the street. Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, okay.
Anyone else that would like to comment? Name, rank, and career.
Hi, I'm Scott Becker with Hodgins Associates, 405 South Washington. Just to shed a little light on that, the Pauls intend to put in duplexes in that area with the parking in the rear, and that's why we wanted to put in that strip, that easement across the back, so that we could cut across from Orchard to North Grand and have rear entry and parking, keep everything off the street, keep the street frontage looking as nice as possible.
Tom, you have something?
I guess I had two questions. One, more on the what we're supposed to be deciding here. My understanding is that the decision is on the lot division request, not on the specifics of what's being proposed to be built, right? So, we're making a decision on a lot division for whatever compatible building can go in an R3 zone, and all of that decision-making happens before building permits are submitted even. So, I just wanted to be clear on that.
That's correct. I was just trying to shed a little light for the neighbors.
Yeah, but I appreciate, because we had that question and we needed to have that answered, but I-
We just want Scott or Mr. Paul not required to come give an answer if they don't wish to.
Right. Yeah, exactly. I just want to make sure I was clear on what we were being asked to do.
And one other point, back to Walters, that is surveyed where the house actually is, so we actually did a topographic survey and-
I knew you did.
Yeah. And it is tough to put those lot lines over an aerial, because, you know, unless you get to pay the high-end aerial, it's a little bit-
Yeah, we've seen that before on various aerials, but we, as I say, keep giving us aerials. It helps us-
Oh, yeah.
Understand what's being proposed, even if we understand the shifting. Thanks, Scott.
And the proposal is for a kind of an access in the back, and that's what you were just talking about.
That's what the easement is.
But it will not be a public alley.
It's not a public alley. It's a private access.
It's private.
Got that. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Susan? I'm sorry, I couldn't see you for Scott. I could see Susan. You'll be next.
I'm hard to miss. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm the only property owner adjacent to this property since the Pauls bought the other property that's adjacent to it. So, my house is the one that's by that back raceway that they were talking about. I-
So, you're on grant?
I'm on grant, right.
Okay.
Yeah, it says lands of Rake and Whitley.
Mm-hmm.
Lands of Rake and Whitley, I love it. Anyway, I get to the point here. What I was looking at is, when we purchased our property there, one of the reasons we purchased in the area we did is because of the size of the lots. We were in the neighborhoods of the 7,000-square-foot lots, and there was new construction, like Indian Hill 6 and so on, that have small lots and so on. We didn't like that. We bought in an existing neighborhood that had larger lots. Well, I see now where that zoning just has that strip that comes through, the zoning that strip that comes through there, that's the R3 and the other's the R2. So, I see now how that is. But I look at the lots of everything around it, and so I'm looking at a density issue. And most of the lots are 8, 10, 12, 13,000 square feet or better, and it's one of the things that's nice about that neighborhood. There's, of the duplexes, I think that there's, in that whole area, I looked at the square footage of the lots of the duplexes, and I think there's only one duplex lot that is 7,000 square feet or less, and I think she's waiting to speak, too, the owner of that house, if I'm correct. But I kind of like the density of that area, and I'm thinking 7,000 square feet on a lot is just a little bit, a little bit too, a little bit not like the neighborhood.
Okay.
But on the other hand, of all the people, well, I did try to buy some of it, but they wouldn't have the conversation with me, but everybody else who lined up to buy that, we got the best people who could have bought it. So, I am appreciative of that.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, ma'am?
So, I'm Kate-
Nope, nope, nope. Got to be up at the microphone.
Okay, thanks. So, I'm Kate Beasley, and I'm at 1233 East F Street.
Okay.
The one, the corner there across from the school district. It's not a duplex. It's a single-family home with a mother-in-law apartment there, so, right? Is it my place you were thinking of? That's what I thought. So, my chief concern goes back to, maybe planning and zoning has considered this, with the increased traffic and the fact that we have a park and a school, so we have a lot of kids in that area on that street, and nothing, I mean, we have kids coming down there going 40 miles an hour and stuff, and it's like, it's a lot of pedestrian traffic competing with car traffic that's not well monitored, and my concern is duplexes in the area probably targeting college students that don't have vested interests in the community, and that really will put our kids at risk.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. You have a question?
Well, maybe it's a Mike question. I just had some questions about the lines there.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you.
I think you forgot my bat to you.
Oh, I'll get you.
You'll get my attention, yeah.
We'll know if I got some.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you all. We appreciate you coming and appreciate what you had to say. You had a question for Mike?
Yes. South of F Street, we have, I guess it's an R2 zone.
Correct.
And we have some smaller-sized lots that are just across the street. Do you know what the size of those lots are, say, across from Jim Lyle Park or Ms. Beasley's lot? Do you know what those sizes are?
I was looking at these earlier, and those, I believe, are around 5,500 to 6,500 square feet in size. I think they're currently single-family dwellings.
Is that a non-conforming lot size for that zone, Dan?
Yeah, it would be. Yeah, 7,000 would-
Whenever zoning lines change, they just happen to be there?
7,000 would be the minimum for R2.
And is North Cleveland right there, does it just have an exceptionally wide right-of-way? Is that why the lot line is so far skewed from the road itself? So, I'm looking right at the administrative offices of the school district, and then across, is that just a really wide right-of-way there? Or is that just-
Bad angle of the picture.
Bad angle of-
Well, it appears that it's a large right-of-way, but I would imagine that it's not centered on the street there.
Yeah, there should be some right-of-way over on the other side of the street by the school offices, too.
All right. It certainly looks wider than-
It does. I mean, it'd be an 80-foot-
The streets to the north.
Yeah, it looks like an 80-foot right-of-way because, you know, you have F Street, which is a 60-foot right-of-way. I'd imagine that Grant and Cleveland, you know, north of F are 50- to 60-foot right-of-ways, so it's maybe one of the traditional 80-foot right-of-ways like we have in the core of Jefferson, Van Buren, Polk.
I guess that's it. I was wondering if there are other 7,000-foot lots within a block.
I have the square footage of those properties if you're interested.
You want to say them, Tom?
What, which ones?
She says she has some footage.
Sure, you could bring it up. If you would, Susan. Bring it back up, that'd be great.
She kind of works in that office.
Yeah, that's right.
I kind of looked up a few of them, and I'll give this to you in a second. I'll just explain here.
Thanks.
I just kind of looked at the square footage around it, and you can see in my pencil drawing this square footage, and then where the blues outlined around that, that's the ones that are duplexes or houses with apartments, which are, that's in the blue. But anyway, that's some information for you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thanks.
I don't have anything other questions.
What's your drawers?
Well, you know, to me, it's a little bit off, but it does fit with those that are direct across from the park as far as lot size, and also those ones down in the, like, to the, I got to get my directions right, southeast there. Having that driveway in the back would seem to take traffic off of the street, and it would for sure take parking off of the street, hopefully, but, you know, I, again, we're not here judging on what's getting built. Is that, I guess, a question for Bill or Mike, is that coming to us again later? Or whatever we decide here, they can do whatever, as long as it's within what fits in that zone?
Correct. Unless you impose a condition with the lot division, they're legally entitled to any and all uses that are legally allowed in the R3 district, like any other property owner in that area is. So, single-family, two-family, both would be allowable uses on that property in that zoning district.
We have a hard time as elected officials and probably as appointed people on P&amp;Z, I'm guessing, ignoring information that's correctly before you, even though it's not directly pertinent to the question at hand, but we do it anyway. Would it be possible that all access would be off the rear, and there wouldn't be no driveways added to F Street? And I'm realizing that's not a condition of this or anything. I'm just asking.
It could be possible.
I hadn't thought of it until now.
Correct. Yeah. In order to maximize your building envelope on the parcel, you know, I would push it all the way up to the 15-foot mark on F Street, and then I don't see any other reason why you would have a 20-foot wide private access easement if you weren't going to re-load all of those buildings they're going to build on there, but that's still hypothetical.
Correct. Tom?
Well, I was just going to make a few comments. You know, it appears that the proposal before us has conforming lot sizes for the zone that's in. I don't find any reason there to deny the request. I'm happy that this would trigger some sidewalk improvement through there. I think, you know, with the school district buildings close by, I think it's good to make sure that we have those, that pedestrian access accounted for. I think there's an added bonus of having potential rear access for vehicles. That's, again, not a condition to the request, but it certainly feels like it would maintain at least current traffic situations right there. I think, what was the other point that I wanted to make? So, anyway, I think that, I feel like all the different concerns that I had are raised. It does trigger one perennial concern that I have about the value of parkland fees in lieu of, and I would really like to see the city engage in some kind of conversation among staff, among council members, to figure out what the appropriate valuation should be for parkland fee in lieu of, because I don't feel like we're keeping up with land prices very well.
Much less the cost of playground equipment having bought-
Exactly.
Some recently, $6.29 may or may not buy the seat for one slide.
Exactly. And the council, the city councils discussed this for all seven years that I've been involved with the city council, and I would really like to see us actually, like, get to that at some point very soon. So, that's my only concern, but that's not, you know, it's, you know, again, too late for this request, I think. So, I'm reluctant, but if you'll come forward one more moment.
I just want to-
You need to be at the microphone, please.
I just want to comment on a couple of things that Mr. Lamar has mentioned as far as not affecting traffic. It may be so, but only for that one block, because to get in or to get out, the traffic's going to be on F Street, except for that one block between North Grant and Orchard Avenue. And to address the sidewalk issue, on that side of F Street, all the way down to Mountain View, there is no sidewalk. So, you're only still addressing that one block.
Okay.
I just want to point that out.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
We appreciate it.
To clarify, my point was just in commenting on the turning traffic in and out of what I think we define backing actions into what I think we define as a minor, a collector or a minor arterial.
It's a collector.
So, that's my reference there, not so much the number of vehicles.
Okay. Bill, you may-
Well, I would just say that, you know, we go ahead and forward this to council, recommend an approval, and see what happens there.
Yeah. Full council.
On the regular agenda?
Regular item.
Yeah, because I think there needs to be-
I mean, there may be more discussion at that point for folks to come to it, and, you know, we may come up with more info with that.
Can we assume it will be on next Monday?
That's correct.
So, for those in the audience, this will go before the full council, next Monday night, 7:00 p.m. Don't know what order it'll be in the agenda, so there you are. Okay, thank you, Mike. Bill Bell now, and the next item is going to talk about Planning and Zoning Commission reporting on their actions regarding the North Main zoning review.
Slide over one seat, if you don't mind, so I can see the screen. I guess the committee is aware, the council set a 2013 council goal to expand the perceived downtown area of Main Street from E Street to the South Cuplet. Did you grab the door, please?
He's got it.
Broad's on.
Thank you. Okay, so, let's start over again there. "To expand the perceived downtown area on Main Street from E Street to the South Cuplet through the construction of streetscape improvements, such as the improvement repair of sidewalks, installation of street trees, and installation of luminaries and furnishings, and evaluation of zoning and development standards by 2016." So, that was a goal that the council established in 2013. Since that time, the commission has looked at this area in two different efforts, the first of which was a class study that was completed by Wendy McClure in architecture class that really looked at the downtown core and kind of compared and contrasted it to that area of Main Street that we were talking about, really that from A Street up to about E Street, where the nature and character of the area changes. The commission also reviewed the existing zoning configurations and building placements in that area earlier this year, in the early spring of this year, and has some recommendations, which is what we're providing to you today. So, just to provide a little bit of background, the area that was referenced in the council goal was from A Street essentially to E Street. There's also reference in the council goal to the South Cuplet, but we've been primarily focusing on North Main, and that really was the area that I think was the focus of the original council goal, and so that's where the commission has started their effort. As you can tell, the area has a different character than the downtown core, and the intent was to try to, you can see kind of the trees beckoning you down to downtown area, but to try to pull that perceived downtown area and that visual cue up in this corridor, up to the, near proximity to the E Street intersection. In the downtown core, obviously, you have buildings that are close to the sidewalk. sidewalk, you have wide, twelve-to-twenty-foot wide walks in certain areas with street trees and furnishings, and as you, as you look in this area, we have more motor vehicle-based commercial users, houses of grocery stores, and convenience stores, drugstores, and gas stations, service stations. And it's also a five-lane highway section, which is very different than a two-lane Main Street with on-street parking. So, they are two very different distinct characters, largely driven by the transportation facility that runs through the middle of it, and the land uses that have been established on its periphery over time. So, again, just a little bit closer view. There is a change near the intersection of C Street, here at the North Cuplet, where, you know, the southbound traffic veers to the west to continue south on Jackson. You have a portion there from A to C that more closely resembles the downtown core, at least with respect to building placements adjacent to the sidewalk. You can see that you lose all street trees in that area right at the break of A, and so that is a significant feature that you lose at A Street from the downtown core. But you do have much more urban feel buildings between the Moose Lodge, Corner Club, and the Han Rental Center, as well as the buildings on the west side of Main Street there. They are placed in much closer proximity to the roadway itself, and again, just a similar view of the area looking to the north. As part of the project, we kind of identified a study area which was shown in the red dashed line that we were looking at and exploring the land uses, and then examining different zoning districts in those area, in the areas to look at how they would align with existing land uses. The current zoning is configuration in the area. We have central business here, south of A, it then transitions to motor business on up, and then we have some multifamily residential on the east side, picking up just north of E Street, and on up to McKinley on the east side of Main. So, majority area is owned motor business. There is some industrial, including the St. John Hardware site and Gropp's property there, that's, that's owned industrial. We have some residential office on the east side as it transitions out into multifamily residential, and we predominantly have multifamily residential on the west side of the study area. Obviously, this is a boundary that's a little bit larger than just the Main Street corridor, but we were trying to get a boundary that's a little bit more defined by the street system as we were looking at the area. Underneath the existing zoning designation, which is predominantly motor business in this area, there is a ten-foot required front yard setback, and so the parcel shaded in red indicate buildings that do not comply with that front setback, and would be generally considered to be non-conforming, not in use specifically, but in the building placement within that setback. And obviously, that is something that if we're trying to enhance the experience or mimic the feel of downtown in this area, is something that we would wish to try to possibly promote rather than have them as a non-conforming status. When the Han Rental Center was burned down...
Can I stop you for a moment?
Yes.
How did that happen?
Well, a lot of those were placed long before.
Did the zoning come along after the placement, or...
Correct, correct. In the vast majority of these cases, these buildings were placed long before the current setback requirement was imposed upon the property.
Okay.
So, most of these, from the Mark IV prior motel, it was to property lines on at least three different sides. These are all structures replaced before that standard was imposed. There are, there are others that, that may meet setback requirements, and those are shown in different colors there, but this is really just, you know, to illustrate that we do have a conflict with setback requirements in the motor business district in that area.
How do those compare to the central business district as far as setback?
In the central business, there is no setback requirement.
It's more conforming to those southern stuff, south of, or south of A Street then.
That's correct.
So, just to keep beating this horse a little bit, in the central business district, are you required to build up to the property line?
There is not a requirement that you have to build up to the property line. There just is no...
You're just allowed to.
You're just allowed to, which is a little different than the UMC district that we created for legacy crossing, which does require you to build up to the, within five feet of the property line in that area. And we're looking at uses. Underneath the existing motor business district, the green uses are permitted by right, the yellow require a conditionally or special use permit, and the red are what we consider to be non-conforming uses. Those are predominantly only the residential components that existed in the area. Actually, this residential structure, I think, has been recently demolished, so that no longer exists as a non-conforming use. There is a, I think, one home is located here on the west side of Main Street, and there was some level of residential use in the Stewke property. Those would be generally considered to be non-conforming uses because residential uses generally are not allowed in the motor business district unless they're approved through a planned unit development. A good example of that is the Anytime Fitness Project, where they added residential units above the fitness center when they renovated that structure, and that was permitted through a PUD by the Planning and Zoning Commission. We also took a look at the application of different zoning districts to the area, other existing zoning districts. So, the GB is very similar to the central business district with respect to land uses. While there were still a number of uses that were permitted conforming uses, we had a number that were either shifted into conditionally permitted status or into a non-conforming use. So, for example, gas stations are conditionally permitted use in the CB district and the GB district, and similar for residential uses are by a condition use permitted in the general business district.
So, St. John Hardware is a non-conforming use in an industrial zone?
Well, this was looking at GB over the entire area, so they would become a...
This is looking, if you were to change it to GB...
I see.
And certainly, you could adjust the boundary, and that could remain industrial for the time being.
Go back one slide, please. So, this is showing conforming, non-conforming, et cetera...
Under the current.
For the existing motor business zoning.
And, and industrial as well.
And industrial.
Yeah, it was just really looking at the existing zoning.
And your next slide is a what if?
If you were to look at changing the entire area to general business, you would tip certain existing uses into either non-conforming or conditionally permitted.
And a fairly new one being Han Rental.
Being Han Rental would be one that's not even really permissible in the GB district.
And Moscow Transmission.
Correct. And then the new service station would become a conditionally permitted use.
Right now, it's by right.
So, right now, it would be a legal non-conforming use, while it's by right today underneath the motor business district. We also looked at the UMC district as well, somewhat similar. You know, we, we do not identify gas stations as a permitted use in legacy crossing in the UMC district, Han Rental the same way, Transmission Shop the same way, and St. John. So, we did have a number of existing uses that would not generally be consistent with that designation either.
Bill, to continue to interrupt you, because I couldn't remember all these at the end, what would be the benefit of going to either UMC or GB?
The GB has...
Are we just doing a planner's exercise in what if?
We're doing an exercise, so there are benefits in the GB district, and GB is very much like CB in that it does not require a setback. So, the building placement up to the street wall, and maybe a better transition would be allowed. The, you are still required to provide off-street parking, because now you're becoming distant from public parking facilities, and so parking still remains required. And it's, GB is generally viewed as being a softer transition from central business to general business to the motor business corridor. And so, that was one possible zoning designation. A second was extending the central business district designation to the north, but the concern there was that we have very little readily available public parking. There's only a few...
And it's not a requirement.
And, and it's not required in the CB district. And so, and the uses are very similar to GB and CB. So, with respect, if we were gonna choose between the two, we would suggest GB, because you're getting far enough away from public parking facilities that really the uses need to provide parking in some fashion. The UMC is another possible district. It was designed predominantly for legacy crossing, but certainly could be applied in other areas.
Not restricted to...
Not restricted. It has a, a variety, a mixture of uses. It requires the buildings to be built up to, up to the street line, so it would help reinforce that area. But there are some uses and some fairly significant recent investments that just are not compatible in that district, and so, those are some of the conflicts that the commission looked at.
Continuing to interrupt.
Sure, it's okay.
The parking lot just south of Culligan, right at the Jackson ramp, that is a private lot?
This little triangle here is actually public.
The next one up?
Uh, this is private, correct.
I guess, you know, the old, I tads there.
So, after the commission reviewed the area and went through the evaluation of potential different designations, you know, one of the first and foremost comments that the commission had was that, that I think the commission supports the council's goal and objective of trying to extend the perceived area of Main Street downtown, but the commission is very aware that the cuplet system, the five-lane road section, has a significant impact to really be able to achieve, you know, mimic what you, what downtown looks like in that area.
Setbacks or not...
All right. And, and really, the roadway system is a, is a big contributor to that area not feeling like Main Street, and that's not changing in the near term, I think, from the commission's perspective. And so, that, that presents challenges both in vehicular volumes and speeds, and just the roadway width, and access, and all those, all of those things that really make downtown very inviting and enjoyable are more challenging out in this area. In looking at the different designations, I think the commission felt that the motor business district was the most consistent designation in consideration of the existing land uses and recent significant investments in the study area. So, they felt probably that was the best fit as we looked at it. The commission also recognized...
Change is not...
A change of zoning is not necessarily a recommendation.
Yeah, that was, that was not the first, that was not the first option that the commission suggested. That, the commission also recognized that the placement of structures in proximity to sidewalk, like we talked about in that area between A and C, is a significant contributor, and the commission would like to explore the possibility of adding a condition use permitted in the motor business district to allow the reduction of this, of the front setback where it's consistent and compatible with surrounding land uses and with the city's comprehensive plan. The other aspect that the commission felt was, was important was the allowance of residential development, and we have seen in our office significant interest in adding residential uses above commercial uses in a variety of locations and areas. The Anytime Fitness is a good example in this corridor, and we also think that that helps contribute. That actually adds height and massing to the buildings, rather than just single-story commercial uses, single-use buildings, so we'll get a mixture of uses in there, provides more vitality, more people in the area. And so, the commission would like to explore the expansion of residential uses in the motor business and possibly other commercial districts. The Anytime Fitness was a great project. It was one that the commission didn't feel should have had to go through a planning and development review. You know, it's, it's requiring additional hurdle of a project that you would like to try to encourage.
Encourage.
So, that was something that the commission also felt would be helpful to this area, 'cause this is, this is right on the edge of the downtown core. You could easily see anticipation of residence uses added in this area. And finally, the commission...
And just on that one, again, they're not recommending that the council do that, they're saying we would like to explore doing that.
Correct. The commission would like to explore a possible amendment to expand the commercial uses, residence uses in commercial districts.
They're not requesting that we do anything, just saying that they're gonna look at it.
They would like to look at it, that's correct.
Yeah, I think we're, you know...
Okay.
And the final item was that the commission does feel that the installation of street trees and lighting that's similar to the downtown area, rather than large copperheads having the more historic light fixtures, improvement of some sidewalks. There's some sidewalks that are in pretty poor condition, actually fairly narrow in some of these areas, would probably be the most significant step that we could do to visually extend that perceived area of Main Street north, where many of the land use actions or amendments to the zoning code allow for things to happen over time as properties redevelop. And so, but, you know, a more immediate would be getting trees planted in that corridor and bringing them up and to that, near that E Street intersection, and certainly, the commission encourages the council to pursue those efforts as soon as possible. And I think finally, the commission wanted to thank the council for the opportunity to assist in the council's goal and provide their recommendations for the council's consideration, and looks forward to receiving direction from the council.
Well, I would, I guess if the, further direction would be their, you know, they were asking about looking at the, your Part III and looking at the, not, not having to do a PUD-type deal, whether, whether it becomes an allowed use or what in that district. That might be something that, that we'd wanna have them go ahead and look at.
There were, there were two legislative code amendments that, that they would be looking at. The first of which is, it allows to potentially reduce the front yard setback in the motor business district. It's not an issue in the CB or the GB or the UMC, but in the motor business district, it is the case. And we're looking at sites like even the Rozars property, if they wanted to add building pads out along the Main Street front edge.
Bingo, that's a very...
You know, being able to place those a little bit closer to the street, rather than having to hold them back ten feet, would be desirable, so we can help try to encourage that opportunity. There are other locations on the highway corridors, you know, in high-speed areas where you may not want that because of sight distance or visibility of the structures.
We're already twenty-five mile an hour by there.
Right, so that's a, that's a slower area if you're trying to encourage more of a pedestrian character development than allowing for those structures to be closer to the street front would be beneficial, and certainly sight distance can also be reviewed on a case-by-case basis, but they wanted to be able to have. So, that would be one. The second would be also exploring the, the enhanced residential uses in the commercial districts in the city zoning code.
Yes. Thank you. I, I think that the, the P and Z's identified some nice directions for them to start exploring. I, you know, you, you just mentioned the Rozars potential example. I don't, certainly don't know if they would be even interested in something like that, but I, I do think that if there were some building pads and some things up close to the street, that it would start creating this feel that we're interested in. So, and street trees, all these other kinds of things. I know that, so, I think that those are all good, good things to see. I know that from my experience riding a bike through that area, my preference is to stay on Washington, one block over, heading south, and then about C Street, come over, connect on, and since C, since North Main at that point is one-way heading north, I need to ride on the sidewalk heading south until I get to A Street. So, there's about a one or two-block section that I'm on the sidewalk until I can head south. But it feels safer that way than, say, riding down Main Street in front of Rozars. So, you know, I, I think from the experience that a person has using the facility, you know, those are some things to, to take into consideration.
I would be supportive of P and Z exploring the reduction in the front setback. I'd be supportive of, and they use slightly different wording in number four than they did three. One, they said the commission would like to explore, and in number four, they said they would recommend the city explore. I, I think Dan said the same thing, would like to see P and Z...
Yes.
Explore the expansion of residential uses in motor business, et cetera.
Yeah.
And then one last comment. The original goal was before 2013. It came from Sue Scott, and to my memory, it initially was the pedestrian-scale lighting, sidewalk treatments, and furnishings, and, and street trees item, and somewhere, not necessarily in a bad way, but it did morph into looking at zoning and uses, so created a broader goal, and we approved it than what our initial, I would like, happened to be.
Yes.
Anything else?
No, I think, I think we, I think it's good. Sounds like a nice direction.
Is that direction enough, you think, or...
It is.
That's great.
So, we'll accept the report and provide further direction, which we just did.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Next item, I thought Mike just was hanging around 'cause he liked us, but no, he wants to present item...
He's got a lot of work to do.
Numbered four originally, Indian Hills Sixth Edition Track B, Lot Six, Lot Line Adjustment.
I'm hanging around for that reason as well.
Okay. Good answer.
So, this is just basically following up on a May 5, 2014 item, where as the city council approved a MOU, Memorandum of Understanding, with a valifer of Indian Hills Sixth Edition, basically to amend the parkland boundaries to add two lots located directly adjacent to, in the west of the current parkland parcel. This is within Indian Hills Sixth Edition, under specific terms and conditions as detailed within that MOU. And one of those specific conditions, stipulations within that MOU includes the city's vacation of the eastern ten-point-three-three feet of the existing parkland dedication along the common lot lines of Lots Eight and Nine of Block Six of Indian Hills Sixth Edition. That's basically totaling approximately seventeen-hundred square feet in size, and so, I'm sure you're familiar with the, the parkland parcel that currently is dedicated within Indian Hills Sixth Edition. It's outlined in red, center of your screen there. This is the Lot Line Adjustment Proposal. Basically, the red dashed line is the existing parcel boundary. Basically, it's gonna shift it ten-point-three-three feet to the west, and it tapers down to ten-point-four feet on the south end, essentially increasing the size of those existing parcels on Eight and Nine. the size of those existing parcels on Eight and Nine. And originally, the parcels were around, you know, Eight's about 7,000 square feet in size, and Nine, 7,200 square feet in size. So, that will increase the size of those to about 8,000 square feet in size for both of them. So, pretty simple. Basically, staff just recommends approval of lot line adjustment requests with no conditions.
Anything else of note regarding the park shuffle, since the council last heard about it?
There'll be, all of the action items will be for the council coming up on June 2nd. So, there'll be the hearing on the pedestrian easement vacations, the parkland vacation, and acceptance of new dedication, as well as the purchase agreement for Lot Two of Block Six, I believe it was.
And the, and the dedication of Lot One?
Yeah, the dedication of Lot One is being packaged along with the va, this, this vacation.
But we're not seeing that on this map right here.
You're not, no, it's not shown on that map. This was just to handle the lot line adjustment, that once all of that occurs, that we have on the record that we've approved the new lot line configurations.
We're trying, we're going to try and do all that next week, then.
It is all set up in Notice Four hearing on June 2nd. So, now, this item will just carry on consent, I'm anticipating, and all the other items will be...
Oh, well, it'll be part, or could be part of that whole package, I guess, but...
Right.
So, the answer is it is proceeding as described, and these are just the hoops that have to be legally gone through to get there.
That is correct.
The 10-foot detail.
Yes.
The 10, yeah, the 10-foot detail. Okay, recommend approval?
Yeah, absolutely.
And you say it's not going to be on consent, it'll be part of the...
This, we're anticipating to carry on consent.
It would be fine with me to be on consent.
Yeah, that's fine.
That's fine.
Yeah, I mean, if it doesn't muddy anything as far as the rest of it.
No, we'll have, we'll have three or four public hearings that evening, so the fewer regular agenda items, the, the better. So, I think this would be best on consent.
I'm sure the mayor can handle them all.
Yes.
Okay, so, yeah, recommend approval, consent, go to consent. Okay, the last item today is the, a resolution for destruction of documents. And, oh darn, I was hoping Stephanie would come present this.
She may present it. I just had a couple of corrections I'd want to add to it. Rod Hall, City Attorney.
Why don't you present it and add questions at the same time, sir?
Okay, just at the resolution, on the second whereas, talking about temporary records. It should say that those that need to be retained for, I would insert "not before" less, and change that from five years to two years. So, retain for not less than two years.
And the second whereas?
And that, on the second whereas, on the temporary records, those are two years, not less than two years.
So, the five is a typo?
Um, yes.
Okay.
And then on the permanent, I would just also, the semi-permanent, on the third whereas, I would just recommend putting not less than five years. Just add not less before, not less than before five years.
Okay.
And that's all I have.
Are those a matter of law, those times?
Yes.
Okay.
Those are under the statute under Idaho Code 5907, which gives the guidelines for retention of, and classification of municipal records.
Okay.
And then also, just also, just to let you know, you might want to talk about this at some point. It talks about on permanent records, it says that the council can add whatever they want into, for permanent records. Under Idaho, I mean, under the city code, we add contracts. And so, we have to hang on to all contracts.
That's why I figured they were scratched off of those.
Yes. But, but that's something you guys can bring up at some point, whether you really want to keep all contracts or not. Some may not have any historical...
Well, is, is there, I would imagine that that was more, meaning Public Works-type contracts rather than...
That's not the way it says.
I know that's not what it says, but I...
I think when they crafted, my understanding was that they had a whole bunch of maybe some historical contracts, so there might have been some historical value there...
Oh, okay.
That got lumped in.
And there may be some with Corey Jenkins and the Mullen Road Band, too, so...
But that's just for food for thought.
I would, I would never throw away the Groove House contract, whatever it is.
I think that's house. I think it's a German, German house.
Groove House. They really, they got big bass guitars and stuff.
Rob, if you, if you were to wish to bring to council a different recommendation regarding that than what we are doing, we would be happy to listen to it.
And we'll talk, there may be some contracts that you do want to keep, maybe just change it and classify which ones you want. It's not sure a contact between vendors necessarily be, for a farmer's market, need to be kept in perpetuity. And I don't think the Historical Society will ever, the State Historical Society will take those.
A question for Stephanie, and you, you may know this, are you absolutely sure we can get rid of the plane ticket? Does it have any, any, any value?
Mary Blithe's plane ticket?
I don't think you can get any refund at this point.
That was my question.
And I don't know if it's one that's actually been used, but she just, you know, that they didn't keep.
It's probably...
Yeah, it may just be something that's been used.
Just a used...
That was so many years ago, I can't imagine that we could still, that would still have any monetary value.
Who's Mary Blithe?
She's a previous art director.
Oh!
She, she was one of the first.
Yeah.
Well, I want to...
I could text her on Facebook.
Publicly thank Kathleen for going through her desk.
Hey, I'm wondering if I could bring my files in?
Finding all this stuff.
Can I bring my files in and have them shredded?
Stephanie makes, shred day, you can probably bring it down here. Okay, can send it to the guy?
Absolutely. I'm, I'm all for it.
We stretch that as long as we can. Thank you, Rob. And thank you, Bill. Anything else?
Nope.
No, that's exciting.
We consider ourselves a giant.
Sounds good.